Good evening, everybody. If we could all get seated. Forgot my gavel. Call to order the March 28th, 2024 meeting of the Greenbrier County Republican Party. At this time, I'm going to ask our committee chaplain, John Wyatt, if you don't mind taking the mic and leading us in prayer.
Just bow our heads. Father, we're blessed, not just blessed to be here at this meeting tonight, but blessed to be from this great state, West Virginia, part of this country that we live in. But we're blessed too because of the season that we're celebrating now too also, not the political season, but the crucifixion of our Lord and His resurrection. And so, Lord, we ask you to be with us tonight. I know our hearts are heavy as we think of Blaine and his passing and his family, but, Lord, we ask you to just be with us, be in everything that's said and done, may it be done decently and on order, and thank you for the crowd that's come out tonight. Lord, we ask you to just guide our hearts and our thoughts in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Maybe to kick me out or anything.
God cheer for Trey. All right. Secretary is not here. She is on vacation tonight, and so if it's okay with everybody, I'm going to call roll. Eastern District, Ben Anderson, present. Trey Ewing is here. He just is going to get himself a chair. Marie Lewis. Sharon McAllister. Debra Bowman.
Present.
Sue McKinney. Jim Childers. We have to have an electronic. I never got anything. I never got anything. If he wants to send it in, that's fine, but for right now, for this purpose, I can't count him right now. Okay, so Jim Childers and then Danny Campbell. Steve Dunford. He did send it. We do have possession of the electronic copy of that. So Steve Dunford has given his proxy to Veronica Bishop. John Wyatt. Linda Spencer. Veronica Bishop. We have quorum. At this time, I did not have this in here. I would like a motion to allow Linda to be the acting secretary for the evening. She's graciously agreed to do such. Danny moves. Is there a second? Sharon seconds. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. We need now a motion to approve this agenda. Is there a motion on the floor? Danny moves. Is there a second? John gets it? All in favor, say aye. Okay. Jamie's not here tonight. She promised that next meeting that we'll go over those minutes. Motion to dispense with the reading of the secretary's minutes tonight, please. John moves. Is there a second? Debbie seconds. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Treasurers report. Debbie.
Yes, as of our last meeting, we began with $15,944.64. We had two dividends, one of $50 and one of $83 for the last event that we had at the community center. We have one deposit of $100, which now our checking account as of today is $15,911.64.
Nice little work chest going into the rest of the year. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report? Sharon moves. Is there a second? Veronica seconds. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Is there any old business that I'm not aware of before we move on? Hearing none, let's move to new business. For those of you who may not be aware, our county lost a hero two weeks ago. County Commissioner Blaine Phillips unexpectedly passed away. His leukemia came back and after one week, he was gone. And it has been a very difficult time for all of us, but we know where Blaine is. And he has a new body. He is totally healed and by accepting Christ, we'll see him again. At this time though, I would like for us all to have a short moment of silence for County Commissioner Claus. Thank you all. I would ask that we all be in prayer for Tammy Tensher and Lowell Rose at this time. As a new commissioner will have to be appointed and that is going to take a lot of prayer, a lot of thought, and they need our prayer indeed. So please keep them in mind during this time and keep Blaine's family in your prayers as well. Well, I'll just say real quick, one of my favorite Blaine Phillips moments was during the Mike Honaker campaign in 2022. Ah, it is your line. This is Debbie who came back and found this one. The TV ad for Mike where Blaine got right in front of the camera with his gun said, "Just say no to Paul Detch." Blaine had so much joy in getting to air that on WBNS. That was Blaine. That was Blaine. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Moving on, we are kind of on a mission this primary season to try to invite everybody possible to come to our executive committee and speak to us. And one individual who has been surging in the polls and seems to have a lot of momentum in our governor race is Chris Miller. Chris Miller is a successful businessman from Huntington, West Virginia, and he is here tonight to give his presentation, make his case, take questions. I encourage you all to just grill the heck out of him because I think this guy likes that. Ladies and gentlemen, Chris Miller.
Thank you guys so much for having me. Really appreciate it. I want to spend some time telling you who I am in here and in here because I think that really does matter when we're talking about selecting our leaders. That's what we're doing when we're electing officials. Might move over here a little bit if that's okay. There's a cross if you can speak. So anyway, born and raised in Huntington, West By God, Virginia. Been married for almost 20 years and you can tell the caliber of a salesperson by how far they outkick their coverage with their spouse, and I definitely outkicked my coverage. My wife is one of my favorite people on planet Earth. We've got three kids, like I said, a 16-year-old boy and a 15-year-old boy. Both of them wrestle for Huntington High School and also we have an 11-year-old little girl who I think we're all going to wind up working for one of these days because she's an absolute firecracker. When I was 10 and a half years old, I told my dad I wanted a pair of Air Jordan tennis shoes. And when he found out they cost $125, you know what he told me? Get a job. And I did. Got a paper route and woke up every single morning delivering newspapers. Didn't matter if it was Halloween or Thanksgiving or Christmas or whatever it was, rain, sleet, snow, you had to go out and deliver newspapers. And it taught me a lot about the value of hard work and it also taught me a lot about people because you would be surprised who doesn't want to pay that 13-year-old boy his $13 for delivering the newspapers all month long. And so it teaches you creative things like how to collect money and you'd be surprised. You know, you call Mr. Johnson at work, "Hey, Mr. Johnson, is Steve there? He owes me $13 for the newspaper." And all of a sudden, you're not 60 days past due anymore. They paid you. And so it teaches you a lot about life. And later on, my parents bought a big plot of land and we turned it into a bison farm. And me and my brother worked every single summer for four years on this farm, building the infrastructure of it, baling hay, clearing fields, building barbed wire fence, building electric fence, cutting down locust trees and curing them and skinning them to make fence post corners. I don't know if anybody here has ever done that before, but you take a locust tree, take the bark off of it after it's cured, it smells like sewage and it gets all over the place and it's terrible, but those fence post corners are still up to this day. Learned how to weld, learned how to run heavy equipment, and that's some of the other best memories that I've ever had working because it teaches you so much about what real work is. Eventually, I got involved in our family's businesses and when I got involved, we had two. And through a lot of hard work and blood, sweat and tears, I was able to turn that into 26 different enterprises. We have 700 employees, 500 of which are right here in West By God, Virginia. We're in the automotive space, insurance, reinsurance, real estate. We got that bison farm as well, and I also have a data and technology company. And I said this earlier out there in the hallway to somebody, and this is the truth. If I ran my businesses the way the government spends our tax dollars, I'd be broke. And at the end of the day, I think if we think about this, a governor, he's supposed to be the CEO of a state. And his job is to solve problems and report to the taxpayers, which is every single person in this room. And I think that that system's a little bit upside down because right now, it's this system where we as taxpayers, every person in this room, every person in this county, everybody around the state, we're beholden to the government as opposed to realizing that we technically speaking are shareholders. We should be looked at as shareholders of the state and every dollar that we pay in taxes should be looked at as providing us with a return on investment to make our lives better. In our state, we have some serious problems in front of us. We are dead last in just about everything. We're almost last in economy. We're last in education. We're last in, well, technically speaking, we're first place in the most amount of overdoses. We're also number one in the number of grandparents raising grandchildren. That's awful. It says something about culture. We also have this good old boy system that's been running our state for far too long that's incessuous and gets in the way of actually doing stuff for the people. And our greatest export is not our coal and it's not our natural gas. Our greatest exploit we're working for right now is our kids. And we have to fix that because that is going to create a financial catastrophe if we don't solve it right now. Good news is there's a solution. We start by running state government more like a business. We audit every single dime that is spent of the taxpayer money and we create an economy that thrives because that's the first step in making sure that our kids stay here. We also need to kick wokeism completely and utterly out of our school system. We got to make sure that, I've got an 11-year-old daughter, we have to make sure that things like biological males are not going into the bathrooms with our daughters because that's happened. By the way, that really is happening in West Virginia, all around the state. It's happening in Bridgeport. It's happening in Cudall County. It's happening in Huntington. It's happening in Parkersburg. We're told that's not a problem, but it is. The other thing we need to do is we need to make sure and kick lobbyists and special interests completely and utterly outside of a governor's administration. There should be no influence whatsoever from special interests. We should not be steered or controlled by lobbyists. We should not be steered or controlled by special interests. We've already seen what Big Pharma's done to our people. They did that on purpose. That was deliberate. They poisoned us and there's no reason to stand for that at all. So our state has an incredible opportunity in front of it, but we don't realize how great we really are. I mean, think about our history for a minute. Our people, our forefathers, our grandparents, our parents, they mined the coal to build the steel that led to a victory in World War I. And they mined the coal to build the steel that led to a victory in World War II. And then they mined the coal that led to the cheap energy post-World War II that was the greatest capitalistic expansion in human history. We did that. We just suffer from a little bit of PTSD and don't realize it because of what's happened to us because quite frankly, we've been extracted for way too long. And if you think about what's happening right now, everything that we do in the future is going to be about technology. We're all walking around with these supercomputers in our pockets. As this advancement of technologies happen with artificial intelligence, blockchains and all this other stuff, you have to have power to fuel it. Think about West Virginia for a minute. We have an abundance of coal. We have an abundance of natural gas. According to the Department of Energy in the United States, West Virginia has the greatest potential for geothermal heat in the world. We can produce more power through geothermal than Saudi Arabia can with natural gas. We also have more water that passes through our state than any other state in the country. Meanwhile, out west is drying up. Arizona reservoir is drying up. Colorado River is drying up. Dams in Nevada are shrinking. I mean, they're uncovering bodies the mafia threw in there to build Las Vegas. That's really happened. And West Virginia is the birthplace of water for the East Coast. And when you add all that stuff up, and this is the start of what I want to be able to accomplish for West Virginia, you add all that stuff up, I believe that we can leverage all of our natural resources and do something for our people by making West Virginia the state in the union with the cheapest power in the country. I'm talking about a 50 to 70% reduction. Think about what that does for economic growth and development. Businesses will come to us. Commerce will come to us. We already have it all right here. And then you think about Jim and Susie Atkins, both of them were 70 years old on social security. They're retired. You cut their power bill by 70%, you've done something incredibly impactful for them as well. And that is where we need to go and what we need to do to take our place in the emerging 21st century economy. That right there. Now, there's some other stuff we have to do. We got to hit the singles and the doubles. We got to get rid of the state income tax because three of the four fastest growing states post-pandemic are Tennessee, Texas and Florida. And you know what they all have in common? A zero state income tax. Pretty simple stuff here, but you just got to get it done. I will tell you that I've spent the past 15 months traveling around this state and I believe our people deserve better than what we have had because our people are some of the best people you will ever meet on planet Earth. It's only in West Virginia that people will bring you into their home and feed you even when they don't have a lot. It's also something in West Virginia, when your Tesla breaks down out in the coal country, miners will come out of that mine, push that Tesla to a coal-powered generator to charge it, to send you on down the road. That really happened. That is a true story. You can look it up. That is the best part about our state is the people and we deserve better and we've got what the rest of the world needs. And if we play our cards exactly right and work together, not only can we show the rest of the world what we're really capable of, but we can do something for ourselves for once, which is be the state in the union with the cheapest power in the country and use that for the foundation of all of our future economic growth and development. Ladies and gentlemen, it would be the honor of my lifetime, aside from marrying my wife, to be chosen as the next governor of the great state of West By God, Virginia. And I promise you one thing, nobody will outwork me. Nobody will. I will be in that state Capitol for 70 to 80 hours a week, busting my hump to make sure that every single person in this room, every single person in this county, and every single person all around this state has the representation that they deserve. We can do something spectacular if we just work together. We really can. It's just going to take good old-fashioned hard work. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Chris Miller and I hope to be chosen as the next governor of the great state of West By God, Virginia. And thank you very much for having me. Thank you.
Okay. Tristan Deeds, your job is to get the microphone around the room and you're going to be light on your feet. Tristan is in from West Point. Let's get him. Let's start. Who would like to start? I ask the first question, Mr. Miller. Sue Spicer.
I think you heard that all years right here.
Chris, I've been really watching the ads a lot because obviously you have a lot of money to spend on ads. This last ad has really bothered me though because it says that Patrick Morrissey lobbied for transgenders. That is, I went back and started researching. That's absolutely not true.
So 100% factual?
No, sir, it isn't. And I've got proof of it.
Yes, maybe it is.
But my point is, why do we have to be so negative about everything? Why can't we really campaign on the good things that you can present or anybody else can present, not this negative stuff?
I agree. So I really, I appreciate that question. First off, in the very beginning of this election process, I let every single candidate know that my intention was to stay positive the entire time. And then over the past month, I was attacked by Morrissey and his PACs in an absolutely ridiculous way where they made up complete and utter fictitious lies about me. I knew I had to respond and unfortunately, that's what you had to do. And so what I did is make sure to respond factually. We did an incredible amount of thorough research and have traced this completely. There are standards as well that has to be approved by outside counsel and verified to be factual, what it is advertised inside of the campaign to do, and that is a truthful, factual observation of his actions from what he did in 2011. He lobbied for a company that was trying to convince Medicare and Medicaid to incorporate hormonal replacement therapy and transgender surgeries on minors in reimbursement for Medicare and Medicaid. And we have all the documentation to prove that. All of it. I hate that that's what happens in politics. I'd rather much run on issues and positive messages, but when you're attacked for an entire month straight with absolute patented lies, you have to respond. You have to. And quite frankly, I'm a fighter. Grew up boxing and not only do I know to take a punch, but I know to throw one. And eventually I can only play defense for so long before I step up and strike back.
Next question.
Thank you.
Next question, please. Mary Hamilton.
Why did your father donate to a dark money group running negative ads on the attorney gym? Doesn't that violate Reagan's 11th?
Great question. So anybody, you, anybody else in this room, has the opportunity to give money wherever they want to. It can be a charity. It can be for protecting someone else's free speech or spreading information to counter, like we spoke about earlier, attack ends. And that's exactly what he did. It's pretty simple.
Next question, please. Martha Duffitt.
I have a lot of issues that are important, but you touched on a few, so I want just, from personal experience, you say you want to bring in investors to West Virginia. You also say we're losing a lot of our kids. I argue we're losing a lot of our kids because they are indoctrinated in liberal ideology and they want to enter larger cities to get away, not necessarily always find jobs, but that's just me. I find from moving from a larger city on the west that bringing more industry in, especially from outside areas, also brings in special interests and it brings in a lot of liberal ideals and policies as well as a lot of those type of people. Where are we growing in West Virginia? We're growing in liberal cities, right? So what do you plan to do to stop those from happening when you bring in industry? Which agreed, it's great for the economy, but what matters in West Virginia is faith, family and God, and that tends to exit when big industries and outside investors participate.
I love this, by the way. I love being put on the hot seat. So there's a lot to unpack there and I think we need to back up with what the real problem of state is, and I don't want people's eyes to glaze over, but here's the issue. We've been declining in population for the past 40 years. We also have an aging population. Because of the way Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement works through the Affordable Care Act, we're going to wind up with our DHHR's budget continuing to swell so big until the point where it cracks our bond ratings dramatically, raises the cost of government and puts us in a financial tailspin. We have to add about 200,000 people to our state over the next 10 to 12 years to revert that catastrophe. That catastrophe is scary because you know what gets cuts first? The counties without any population, the rural areas, they're the ones that wind up getting cut first after that. And I don't think that's fair, quite frankly. Good news is with that solution, what led me down this crazy path of wanting to actually get involved in politics, being a business guy, is that data company that I started. Started it in March of 2020 and it's interesting because you're almost a case study for that. What the data clearly tells us is we are in the beginning stages of a demographic shift in our country and you can trace exactly what's causing it. First off, the crime inside of the inner cities, the tent cities, the rampant drug use, it made people uneasy. Then after that, the wokeism that was forced in school systems all around the country made people that look at the world just like us very, very uneasy. And then when we locked a bunch of people down in urban areas during the pandemic surrounded by concrete and they couldn't go to church, they couldn't see their friends and their family, they couldn't go to comedy shows, they couldn't get their hair cut, that made people really uneasy. And all of a sudden, the search data exploded where people started looking. They started looking all around the country and what the data tells us is people are looking for a couple of things. They're looking for a higher quality of life, a lower cost of living, hills, trees, rivers, streams and a conservative, family-based lifestyle. That's what people are looking for and it just so happens that that's what West Virginia has. There are four things at the end of the day that are driving this movement. Some of it's social, some of it's cultural, some of it's economic and some of it's political. But those are the categories that are moving people. And that's the crazy thing about data. When you understand it and you know how to use it, then you can use it to your favor to make sure that you're marketing to the right people based on the policies that you create here at the state level. It's one of the things that the executive branch should be doing. Let me give you an example. We have a labor force participation problem here in the state. With data, we can find all of the people moving into retirement that are a part of the military. And we also know that what West Virginia has, they are interested in. And we can market to them and walk them down a decision-making funnel to look at West Virginia. And the best part is they all want to start a second job. They all can pass a drug test and they all look at life similar to people in West Virginia. What we don't want to do is market towards liberalism because that's not really who we are here. We are a Christian, God-fearing, conservative state that has the best people on planet Earth. And so that phrase, "Keep your California in California" applies, but where Texas and Tennessee and Florida started going wrong was that they didn't keep that message as a part of what they were doing. So they are rapidly growing. One of the three things that really are accelerating those three states are the fact that they all have a zero state income taxes. That is a driver. We have to be smart about how we do it, but using data, we can keep true to who we are and grow our population and grow our economy just so much. And then we can start making it difficult for people to come here. And you do that through taxation and you do that through making sure that it's harder for them to come. And you can pull those levers at the right time to make sure that it happens. So with A, it allows us to solve a big time problem and then B, it allows us to control how fast and where it grows. So it's called, it's being smart and understanding the world and knowing how to leverage technology to your favor.
Von Longnick, Billis Longnick.
Thank you, candidate Miller, for spending time with us here in Greenbrier County. I will caution you, however, if you spend too much time here, you'll be packing your bags and moving here because we are almost heaven right here. All right. One second. Yesterday, our current governor vetoed House Bill 5105, which was a bill that we fought to get out of the House, got it over to the State Senate, they got it to the governor. It's a bill which would provide parental rights for choosing what to jab their kids with and what not to jab their kids with. My question is, how do you feel about him vetoing that vaccine exemption bill yesterday, sir?
I love this question. So I did something that is constantly worked out in my favor, and it's called listening to your wife. And when the pandemic hit, my wife started doing all this research, she started watching, looking at what was going on. And she goes, we're not getting vaccinated. We're not putting that in our kids either. And I said, yes, ma'am. And we're not vaccinated. Now, my kids from the past are vaccinated for stuff like measles and polio. Those were real vaccines. Those are shreds of a virus that are used to create an immune response in the body. It's okay, in my mind. We also spaced them out completely, and there are certain vaccines that we didn't get because there's a lot of junk in those things. I believe in freedom. I believe in us being able to be responsible for our own families. History shows us that the single greatest governing entity in the history of mankind is the family unit. We are living in a time right now where there's almost this deliberate and non-deliberate attempt to break that thing apart. Me and my wife know how to make better decisions from all three of our children than the government ever will. And keeping that freedom in place is very, very, very important. I do not believe that anybody should be forced to take anything that they do not want to. They should also bear the consequences of that. Which means that if you as a parent inside of your kid doesn't want to get measles and you get measles, or your child gets measles, you have to bear the consequences of that. It's not very smart, in my opinion, but it's something that should never be forced on a population. Ever. I don't think any of us should ever have been forced to take a vaccine. I think you should have the ability to choose. You should have the ability to decide what's in your best interest. And that's my opinion on that bill. I believe that we should all individually have the freedom to choose what we do and do not want to do because freedom is great.
So the answer is, would you or would you not have vetoed that bill yesterday?
So I haven't read the entire thing, but I will tell you that if in that bill was forcing people to take a vaccine, or sorry, the bill was the opposite. It was not, it was making sure that it wasn't required, I would completely utterly support that. So yeah, I would sign that.
Randy Perdett.
Thank you, Chris, for being in Greenbrier County. Your first 100 days as governor, what's your vote?
Keep it under three minutes.
Yeah, keep it under three minutes. So when I say run state government more like a business, I literally mean that. I've got 700 employees and I've got a software system that links up two different systems together and shows me everything that's going on. And I can dial into every single business to the point where I can see a journal entry in each business. We need to implement that at the state level very, very quickly. Because we don't even have a software system that unifies all the different government agencies together to allow them to communicate, track KPIs and productivity, and then merge all this information to a dashboard to let the legislative branch and the executive branch manage. We also, primarily on day one, I focused on getting rid of the state income tax. And I would figure out a way to find all of the savings inside the government to make sure that we weren't hurting ourselves by doing that. I'd also then create an entire process of making sure that we were able to leverage all of the resources that we have inside of the state to break down the mechanisms that prevent us from being the state unit to be the cheapest power in the country. And so I had to have an entirely wholehearted focus on implementing that in those first 100 days. There will be some difficulties and challenges because you've got a public service commission, utility commission, that you're going to have to kind of break apart. And you're going to have some really good lawyers. But I'm totally and utterly prepared to do that because our people deserve to have the ability to benefit from the resources that we have here in the state. So hopefully that answers your question in less than three minutes.
Less than a minute and a half, really. Next question. Matthew Young. Reporter for Real W T. Love you, brother.
Love you too.
Mr. Miller spoke in quite a bit about economic development this evening. I'm a little curious as to if you have any thoughts about the current methodology for how the state has been working to develop the economy. In the last year, there was Form Energy that was kind of a mixed bag of reactions statewide. If you had to assign a letter grade to the current administration's methodology, what would that be?
What do you mean by methodologies?
Just in terms of how we're sourcing outside businesses, how we're, you know, taxing things.
I will always tell you what I think. My experience being in the private sector and my experience with other really good business people is, the government's not really good at negotiating. And so I think we've done some good things, economically speaking, but I don't think they've been negotiated the right way. And when we're talking about negotiating, we're talking about making sure that the taxpayers get the most amount out of whatever deal has been created. The Form Energy thing, I know there's a lot of work done in that. I don't like that deal. I don't like that deal because we had an out-of-state company touting DEI stuff and touting, you know, green energy, we're going to kill the coal industry using our tax dollars to create a battery plant here. And we also haven't seen the explosion in employment like they say that they're going to. New Core, I think, was a good deal. I don't know if it could have been negotiated better because I wasn't privy to all the behind-the-scenes negotiations that happened with that. But I will tell you that if I was involved in it, I would find more juice left in that squeeze. So I'm pretty good at it. If we talk about the operation of the state, we've done a decent job in finding opportunity, economically speaking. I'm a little worried because our surplus is not a real surplus. We're talking about, you know, West Virginia isn't a good financial state. Well, the fact of the matter is, is that only a certain percentage of that surplus flows into the rainy day fund to be saved for later on. The rest of that money, which is our tax dollars, has either all been spent or will be spent. A lot of it came from energy severance taxes and COVID money. The COVID money is completely gone, the energy sectors can still be here. And so we are not in the same position moving forward that we are on paper right now. And so that is why it's going to take a lot of effort and a lot of work to make sure that everybody in this room has a representation of their tax dollars and we're solving problems and growing our economy the right way. We do stand a fighting chance because, like I said, we have what everybody else needs. If you think about what's happening around the world geopolitically, he's in the Ukraines, that's the direct line of natural gas in Europe. Europe's a country for dumb and decommissioned their nuclear stuff under this green energy guise. And now they're looking around going, uh-oh, we can't power our country on solar and wind. So not only are they looking for alternative sources for natural gas, but they are opening up coal-fired power plants in Europe as we speak. We're not hearing that on the news because it doesn't meet, it doesn't meet the national news, you know, media narrative, but it's happening. And so back to what we have in our resources, there is an incredible opportunity there to not only use those resources for our people, but also turn West Virginia into kind of the battery or the power plant of the East Coast and export our power. But only after our people get what they deserve.
Three more questions.
Three, huh? Not two, not four, three, three.
Very specific. So Dennis got his hand up first. Dennis Breck. Everybody's hands go up at once.
Mr. Miller, thank you for showing up. Appreciate it. You have a lot of good ideas, but I will be honest with you. You frighten me. Do you have a federal firearms license for an automatic weapon?
I want to repeat that question. Does Mr. Miller have a federal firearms license to hold a weapon?
For an automatic weapon?
For an automatic weapon.
And if you do, one day, if it helps the matter, what possessed you to be that aggressive?
So, great question. One, I do not have a federal firearms license for a class III firearm. And that doesn't mean that you cannot shoot them. And my friends is firearms dealer, and that's where that weapon came from. One of the things I like to do in my spare time is, I like to box, I like to hang out with my kids, I like to shoot guns, I like to have a good time doing that. And I also believe that the Second Amendment is pretty simple. It says, shall not be infringed. And I believe that with all of my heart. Shall not be infringed is pretty simple, it's right there in the Constitution. And one of the things you will never see me doing is walking around the street carrying a firearm. I don't need them. I'm good. But I do have them locked up and secured. And I do use them whenever I want to go out and teach my kids about firearm safety, about shooting. That particular commercial referring to has entertainment value to it as well. That commercial has some entertainment value to it as well. I do realize that it could have scared some people. But it is nothing different than anything that we've ever seen on movies or television. It's all over television all the time.
One thing about the Barry Goldmark about elect, that hat promises his nation. Next question. Steve Snyder.
Chris, I know you're a data-driven guy and decisions need to be data-driven decisions. However, emotions are what people vote on a lot of times. I'm going to ask this not to poke you in the eye, but I want to hear your correct response because you deserve the opportunity for it. There is a commercial that says, hey, Carol Miller, your mom took 3.2 or 3.3 in COVID money. You know, the allegation from, from Road or whoever kind of seems to think that that came right into the car dealership and you said it now it's on the campaign. Just please respond to that so you can take the emotion, maybe put the data into it.
So first off, my mom is not a shareholder in any of our businesses. And so she doesn't receive any of that money. Also, when you understand tax structure, when money goes into a business, then you have shareholders. That money doesn't go straight to one shareholder. It actually stays into operating things. So first off, during the pandemic, do you know what I did with all that PPP money? I made sure that every single one of my employees was paid 115% of their average 2019 earnings. Because I did not think that that money belongs to me. It was assigned to make sure that it kept people employed. And so what I did is that I took that money and I gave it to all of my people in a time where we weren't selling cars and when our people don't sell cars, they don't make money. I made sure that every single one of those employees inside of my company was paid 115%, not even 100%, 115% of their average 2019 earnings through 2020. Because that's what it was designed to do. And that's where that money went. Now, I've worked very, very hard and been very, very fortunate and was able to put some of my own money into the campaign. But to make that money, you're going to pay 40% tax to the federal government before it comes to you. And so there is no correlation and connection to that in any way, shape, or form. And I also would encourage you to reach out and ask any of my employees that worked for us during the pandemic to verify that. Because they will tell you that I paid each and every one of them 115% of their average 2019 earnings during the pandemic because that's where that money needed to go. And that's where it belonged, it belonged to them.
Chris, you can hand the mic to Dr. Rob Johnson.
Hello. I want to thank you for coming to our Summers County event last weekend. We really appreciate that. And it's nice to see you again here. At our event, we're challenged with one question, and I'm going to sort of repeat that because I think it hasn't been touched on yet tonight. And that is, you're joining as a conservative Republican when your mother has a history of not being very conservative. How do you plan to counter any impressions that there is carried over from one generation to the next?
Do you mind if I answer it the same way as I did in Summers County? First thing I said, you know, to the gentleman that asked the question was, is that I said, you must not be from West Virginia because people from West Virginia know you don't talk about somebody's mama. Everybody hears her, the expression, sins of the father. I love my mother with all my heart. That doesn't necessarily mean that I would vote the same way that she does every single time. And I'm not here to defend her voting record. I will tell you that sometimes there's a lot more to the story than people realize, like service personnel, the young man go from West Point. Government shuts down, you know who gets paid? A lot of bureaucrats, you know who doesn't get paid? Our military. So there's a challenge there. That being said, I stay true to what I believe needs to happen not only for the state, but for the people. And there's nothing that I wouldn't answer. I was very, very factual with everything that I've said this evening. You know where I stand on the Second Amendment, you guys know where I stand on life, you know what my perspective's going to be on business, business and economic development. And I'm going to sit here and do the job. And I do love what we're doing here right now because at the end of the day, if I'm chosen as the next governor, I would work for you. That's my job, that I would be reporting to you guys, the taxpayers. And so I would expect you to hold me accountable. And one thing's for darn certain, I'm a pretty conservative guy. You can see it on our commercials, and you can see what I'm here talking. And also, I don't hold back. I give you my thoughts every single time. That's the difference between business people and politicians. Politicians talk at both sides of their mouths, say all kinds of words that don't mean much, and try to survive, politically speaking. My job's not to do that. My job is to be frank and candid, manage government more like a business, and respect our tax dollars more and make sure that the people of West Virginia that are a faith-based, conservative, family-type group of people have the representation that they deserve, where their culture, our culture, isn't deteriorated in the economic growth like she mentioned earlier. And we have everything that we need in the future, so.
Veronica, you get one more.
All right.
Veronica.
Thank you for coming and open yourself to questions. A lot of people agree doing that. I appreciate that. I just want to know your thoughts about illegal immigration and drugs coming to our state. I'm talking about Texas border or nothing like that, talking about West Virginia borders. What do you plan to do for the illegal immigration coming to our states and the drugs? They're coming like crazy here, more than ever.
Can I have four minutes instead of three to answer this question?
Your last one, sure.
First thing we need to do is make sure and strengthen law enforcement. We need to make sure that our law enforcement has the, not only the income and pay that they deserve, but also the resources that they need to keep things safe. A lot of that starts and ends with support from mayors and police departments all around the state. But we need to make sure and have strong law enforcement. One of the interesting things about that question, and I'm an open book, I've been sober from alcohol and opiates since April 1st of 2004. It was hard. I mean, it is hard. Detox is free. It's hard. I had to choose between drugs and alcohol and my wife, my first year of marriage. And I made the right decision, but it was hard. And it messed me up for about a year and a half, sleep cycles messed up. Detox is a real thing, but I fought through it. I fought through it. And I promise you guys that you'll never be a governor that understands that you don't be that dynamic better than I do. And we do not get rehabilitation from them. We do not get rehabilitation right, not only in our state, but around the country. And you think about it, it starts with the incentive mechanism because the incentive mechanism is not to get people sober. The incentive mechanism is to churn people through a system and put them back down on the street. So they don't make money when they get people sober, they make money just by putting them through a system. That's wrong. If we're being honest about what it takes to rehabilitate a human being who's addicted to opiates. a human being who's addicted to opiates, it takes 13 to 30 months. We also know that it doesn't matter if you voluntarily go into rehab, or through law enforcement, you commit a crime and you are arrested, and you're given the option to go, as opposed to going to prison. Relapse rates are the same. So that's something we got to be using to make sure that our law enforcement has the ability to catch criminals and help treat them. If we want to get rehab right, it has to be foundation of faith. It takes a combination of group and one-on-one sessions, jobs and responsibilities inside of the community, rigorous exercise, and also towards the latter part, I believe we ought to be teaching them a skill like trades. And when you add all of that up, because the number one reason for relapse is lack of economic opportunity or mobility, when you add all of that up then, in that 13 to 30-month window, then you can create a human being whose brain has been fixed from the opioid epidemic and give them a chance of life again. We get rehab all wrong. And it takes a lot longer to fix human beings than four to eight weeks, or even 12 weeks. It doesn't work. You have to focus on rewiring the pathways in the brain of the addict. And that takes a long time. And the most important key ingredient is a foundation of faith. And that's what data tells us. Thank you.
I think we can all admit one thing. We have a very educated voter base in Greenbrier County. Some of the questions tonight were extremely impressive. Best questions I've been asked traveling around the state. Yeah, this was wonderful. And I appreciate each of you for your questions, because, listen, we have a major responsibility as a Republican Party in this primary, because guess what? Whoever wins the Republican primary is going to be the next governor of this state. So everybody in this room has a lot of responsibility in this decision-making. We're going to extend a hand to Patrick Morrissey, Moore Capito, and Mac Warner throughout the rest of this cycle to come here. And I strongly encourage each of you to come back for each of those town halls as well. At the end of the day, West Virginia is at a crossroads. It really is. And we have to be educated. We have to know what's going on, and we have to be performed. So, on that note, in Rupert, last month, we had a local meet the candidates, which was very successful. Had about 80 folks come out to Western Greenbrier for that. We were tickled to death with that. We're going to continue to have more. There were two individuals that were not able to attend that meet the candidates. I want to give them the same opportunity that everybody was afforded that night, to speak to our body. And we have about the same crowd tonight. Have about a little over 80 in this room. And so I am going to ask Christine Stumpf, who is running for family court judge, to come down. And this is not a slight against Grady, because Grady Ford, of course, got to speak at the last one, as well as Kelly Count. And now we're affording the same opportunity to Ms. Stumpf for family court.
Thank you much. Folks, those who don't know me, I've been practicing law for 38 years, long time. I started with the Justice Department, the only way you can enter the Justice Department from law school, and that is through the Attorney General Honor Graduate Program. I was hired by Ed Meese, who remained my mentor for many years. After I left the Justice Department, I moved to West Virginia. I'm a West Virginian by choice. I moved here in 1998 and have been practicing family law ever since that time. I started in Lewisburg in 2007. I started with Barry Bruce, and then opened my own practice in 2014. One of the most important things that I want you all to take home tonight is that many of the problems that we talked about, that Chris Miller talked about, our economic problems, our drug problem, our serious drug epidemic, these problems, where do they end up? They trickle down to family court. And everyone says, oh, it's just a family court judge. No, your family court judge is the one who deals with the bottom of the problem, with the grandparents that are taking care of their children from their drug-addicted children. So that is the importance. Don't disregard, oh, it's just a family court judge. I've literally been in court since I moved to West Virginia in family court almost every day of the week. That's all I do is family court. Complex divorces, guardianships, child custody, dealing with, I started with the old Family Law Master system. That's how long I've been doing it. But you have to remember that these problems are real. And I'll be brutally honest with all of you, our family court here is in trouble. When you have a guardianship, a grandparent with their child, their grandchild, with their drug-addicted parents, and it takes them three, four months to get into court, to get an order from the judge, that's wrong. My pledge, my absolute pledge, is to get the family court of Greenbrier and Monroe County under control, to follow the statutes. We have statutes that require cases, a divorce case, in 260 days. When does that happen? We have strict time limits. I will make those time limits happen. Thank you.
I think there has been a lot of interest for our executive committee to host an individual family court judge debate. And hopefully, then next month, we can put that together. Another individual who we did not get to see last time, he was ill. We're glad to see him tonight. Dr. Mina Botros is running for Greenbrier County Board of Education. And so Doc will have to come down.
All right. So people that don't know me, my name is Mina Botros. I went to medical school here locally at WVS2M. I went locally to the WVS2M School of Osteopathic Medicine here. And at first, I didn't want to stay in West Virginia. I wanted to leave West Virginia. But as we had children here in West Virginia, we saw the reason why we should stay. We have a community that can raise our children in a Christian household, in a safe environment. The police system in Lewisburg is great. And it was the best decision we've ever made. I'm a family medicine doctor here in Lewisburg. And I also own delicate businesses here and there. I do imagine many spas. So I own white ball centers and detox centers. And I like people in West Virginia as well. We have offices in Central Austin, in fact. So I too understand the meaning and importance of not only a great education, but I also believe that we should run the place as a business, not a central. That's my true, honest belief, that we should run it as a business so that it wouldn't interfere. So that we don't have the same problems we do it day in, day out, just doing the same old thing. I'm an outsider. I'm not somebody that's a teacher, but I'm someone that can think as a business person, but have new perspectives and things. So that's what I believe.
All right. Senator Vince Deeds has requested a little bit of time to speak on the upcoming, upcoming, I guess I have a very loud mouth, the upcoming circuit judge race. I'll give you a little bit of time. Come on down.
Testing. It's turned up just a little. All right. Can everybody hear me okay? Thank you all for being here. It is really important. We have such an educated, a little bit closer. We have such an educated voter field here that it's so important that we do dive into the candidates at all levels. And we have a really unique opportunity, especially here locally, in Greenbrier and Polk County, because it's in the same judicial circuit. And we have an opportunity to elect two conservative judges to the bench. And let me explain that a little bit, because there may be a little bit of confusion. We have two divisions in this circuit. And that's one reason why I want to speak. In one division, it's actually called the second division, we have Patrick By, and of course, we all know him. He's running unopposed in that division. And so he's the walk-on. He's going to get that seat, Lord Welles. And then also in the first division, we have a gentleman that I've worked with since 2005. And he's also, you know, he works out of prosecutor's office. But let me, let me explain just a moment, just about who he is. And that's what I'm going to talk about, because I think it's important that we look at the content and the character of that person and see who he is. Ryan Blake has been, he's a native Greenbrier Countyan. He grew up here and is invested in Greenbrier and Polk County. He, you know, he was born, raised here, and went to Greenbrier East High School, went to law school. And then he had an option in 2005. You know, lawyers, they can make really good money in private sector. They can make great money. But he chose to come back home. He chose to come back to Lewisburg, Greenbrier County. And he chose to serve this community. And so he started out as a law clerk, so he was really familiar with the civil and criminal procedures in circuit court, because right up here. Did that for a couple of years, and then he became one of the assistant prosecutors. And he has maintained that practice for years, because he is a public servant. And I think to me, that is very, very important, to realize that he is a servant that understands the victims of crimes. And I see this day in, day out. And, you know, whether it's with my state police career years ago, whenever he was working felony cases for me, he would deal well with victims. Because, you know, fortunately, you know, most people don't have to deal with the criminal justice system or civil justice procedures until it's the most darkest, desperate time. And whenever they come, they're full of emotion and desperation. I've seen Ryan take turn and hold people's hands, ladies' hands that have been victims of sexual assault, had family members murdered. And that is the man that he is. And he's a godly man. He's a family man. And he believes in public service. And I think, you know, I think, you know, you do the research. I mean, because we are, we have a great, great voter base here that researches the candidates and does a great job. Research. I challenge you to do that, because I think you'll find, just like I have, that, I mean, Ryan believes in God, family, and service, just like what we do. And we need, we need to have two conservative judges, because how this matters to us, how this matters to me and law enforcement, to law order element of the community, is this. If somebody violates, if a criminal violates his bond, his or her bond, or violates his home confinement, and if they violate that, they should go back to jail, shouldn't they? Absolutely. If they violate that, they should go back to jail for a while. And I promise you this, I believe that you'll find and discuss that issue with Ryan. But I think you'll find that he is the man that will do that. And I mean, you know, because we need law and order here, because if we don't, if we don't send those people, individuals that violate their bond, and second chances over second chances, if we don't send them back to jail, you know where they end up at? They end up breaking into your house. They end up breaking into your car. They end up using opioids and stealing to feed the habit. And we've had enough of that. We really have. And I know, and I'll tell you another element that Ryan has done. He has helped me draft legislation as a senator. He's come up with ideas, and he's helped draft legislation. That's how much he cares about this community. That's how much he cares about what goes on here in Greenbrier and Polk County. And so do the research. And really, and you can tell how patient I'm about him, you know, and I think you'll be just as patient about him as well. So thank you very much.
The hour is getting late. Don't want to keep everybody here too long. Let's just get through these last couple agenda items here. I don't have it in front of me, because when I looked for it earlier, it closed. But let me just give you all a little bit of a background on this item about candidate questionnaire. We, as a Republican Party, have a responsibility to educate the public. We believe that it is fair to create a candidate questionnaire related to the tenants of our West Virginia Republican Party platform. We all agree with that? We, as a party, have to stand on our platform. And if any candidate does not agree with a tenant of that platform, then the voters need to know that. On a statewide level, there was one candidate who failed that when the County Chairs Association of the West Virginia GOP put it out. They put out a 20-question questionnaire, and Debbie has found it, including basic things such as, do you oppose efforts to pack the federal courts? Do you support the elimination of all state subsidies for gambling-related activities? Do you support Article 5 Convention of States to impose harm limits? Have you read the platform? Only one individual running statewide failed that. His name is Doug Scaff. Mr. Scaff is the former West Virginia House Minority Leader. And he switched parties in December to run for Secretary of State. Many county executive committees are passing resolutions disavowing Mr. Scaff as a candidate. But I'm not asking the committee to do that tonight, but I will use the bully pulpit here to say Doug Scaff will be on your ballot. And he failed that simple questionnaire. Just want everybody to know that. On the local level, we, as a committee, believe that we should try to educate the public in a matter such as that. At this time, I would like to appoint, so within the next week, we can put this together, not go crazy with it, have a special telephone meeting next week to put this together and get this out to the candidates, so that we can as quickly as possible educate the public. And if you're a conservative, then you have nothing to worry about. If you aren't, it'll show. I would like to ask Veronica Bishop, Debbie Bowman, Sue McKinney, would you three be willing to participate and help on that? Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Thank you. I would greatly appreciate that. We all thank you for that. And if we can try to get together within the next week to hammer that out, that would be wonderful. I would like a motion on the floor to approve those three individuals to that committee. Danny moves. Is there a second? Sharon, seconds. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right. Thank you all. Poll workers, we have filled every slot, which is always a challenge. But thank you to those in the room who have agreed to be poll workers for the 2024 primary. We still need alternates. An alternate is an individual that before the election would still have to go through the training, and you get reimbursed $25 just for the training. And if somebody cancels, gets sick, which inevitably happens, then you will be called and asked to participate as a poll worker on Election Day. I believe the pay rate for that is $200. Somewhere around there. I don't fully quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure it's about $200. So if you or anybody you know might be interested in that, we would greatly appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, come right on down when you can afterwards. Yeah, come right on down when you can afterwards. We will sign you right up. Couple quick notes, and then on comments for the good of the party, I have two quick ones. Like we said, this is going to be a busy upcoming month, a very busy upcoming month. We want to bring in more governor candidates. Alex Mooney has agreed to come here on April the twentieth, I believe it's twenty-sixth, don't quote me on that, I will get that out to you all. We have extended invitation to Governor Jim Justice, also running for US Senate. Thank you all for coming tonight, let's keep it up, and let's keep grilling candidates that we can go into May fourteenth, making the best decisions possible for this state. That's what matters. Beyond that, there has been interest in having a meet the candidates night in White Sulphur. Dennis Brackman and Bobby McClain have been speaking, and the former Methodist Church, remind me what that church is called, Dennis? The Church Out Ninety-Two.
Alvin Living Word.
Alvin, Alvin Living Word. That location is available in case we want to have a meet the candidates. I think it's very important that we go to White Sulphur and that Anthony Region and invite people, because frankly, we, as an executive committee, we've never had a meeting there, at least recently. We've got to do that. You know, we had a very successful time in Rupert, we want to continue to go outside of Lewisburg, because at the end of the day, most people vote Republican aren't in Lewisburg. Or at least downtown Lewisburg, that's, that's a good clarification there. Suburbs of Lewisburg, y'all are probably okay, but we want to continue to go outside of the city limits and visit more town. Bring me ideas, bring this committee ideas. Think we want to start with that, we will get more information out as things come to fruition, but as I always say, this is not the twelve members of this committee's party, this is your party, so please always feel free to give suggestions, and on that note, I will say, I think we want to try to pull off either a picnic or some sort of a get-together the week before the election, and try to invite all the state wides down. Working with a couple people in this room, there will be more information about that soon. Once again, busy month coming up. Are there any comments for the good of the party? Trey.
Yeah, there was a meet the candidates this morning for the House at Shepherd Center, we all kind of talked about it together, and I think it was a general consensus that we'd like the executive committee to do a debate for the House candidates.
Yes, yes, I think there's general consensus that there's a lot of interest in that. Paul.
That would be, yeah. We'll talk about that.
Let's just ask the question, in terms of the local races, who wants to see the House delegates debate first? Put your hands. Who wants to see a different race? Gosh, Rick Parker. Go for it. You stepped in it. Governor would be wonderful, I don't believe we're going to see that. That's just blunt, I don't think we're going to see a governor debate, or, and I don't believe we're going to see a US Senate debate either, I don't, I don't foresee that happening. There are candidates that are just not interested in having an additional debate, which is Not pointing at you, I think you'd be, I think you'd love it. I think we need to focus, at least locally, first on the House delegates. We have a lot of candidates running, several of them in this room, let's try to make that our next priority, and try to set a date within the next week, and have two separate debates, one for forty-seventh, one for forty-sixth, that way to make it fair, and make sure that that individual debate is actually in that district. There's no point in having a debate in Rupert for the forty-sixth district candidates, there's no reason to have something in White Sulphur for the forty-seventh district candidates. Any further comments from the body? Steve Snodden.
Ben, this morning, there were six of us at the meet the candidates event. What we did find out, unaffiliated voters, at least one spoke up, and they are very upset, and folks that I've met on the trail, very upset that the state executive committee has locked the unaffiliated voters out of the 2026 cycle. You know, one person said today, Boogie, correct me, tell me if I'm right on this, the feeling was, is that now that there's a super majority, that the Republican Party is trying to protect incumbents and therefore have locked out the unaffiliations. Personally, I, I agree that it should be open, but you are the folks to carry the water up to the state committee and say, hey, this is what we're hearing at the local level, and if you look at unaffiliated voters in Greenbrier County, I saw the rolls today that get updated every Friday, there's more and more, about twenty-eight percent of voters in Greenbrier County now, I believe, are unaffiliated statewide, it seems to mirror that. They don't want to be disenfranchised.
I'll say this, and you can either love me or hate me on this one, but I'll just be very honest, I was one of the main speakers against closing the primary in 2024. I can see the argument for 2026, but I was adamantly opposed to closing it for 2024, mainly because we have some very important nonpartisan races, and we do not want to tell our independents, we don't want you to vote in our primary, because by golly, we got to get some conservatives elected to these nonpartisan positions. We've talked about it, and we've talked about it, and we've talked about it as a party. Now is the opportunity to do it. I was opposed to slapping the independents in the face this year for that reason. Twenty twenty-six, I can see the argument both ways, that's just Ben talk. Of course, we could be here all night on that subject, I can see both, both sides on that one. I will say, kudos to you all going to the Shepherd Center, that debate being led by Cindy Lappert-DeBeau, if I'm not mistaken. God bless her soul. Dennis Brack.
Well, you go to great job representing a fisherman in Greenbrier County. What do you want to do about, you know?
Oh, wait, well, the position is full, the position is full, and I, I think that those who have been following Greenbrier County politics know my opinion on that, and I would just prefer with this, with this body, not to go into that, but, and I also want to be respectful of her and of fact, that individual has won there quite a lot in the past several months, but at the same time, that is something that will likely be addressed in the future. Boogie.
Ben, can you give us any update on the impending outcome of the county commission on how that's going to work for the general election in November to fulfill that in Smire's term? Can you give us any insight on?
Without, it's a difficult conversation to have, because it's so fresh, it just happened, and so it's, it's difficult for me, but I will go ahead and say what I have learned. The county commission will appoint an individual to serve the rest of 2024. The Greenbrier County Republican Executive Committee will then have to appoint one individual to the ballot, and there will be an election in November, and then the Democrats may or may not appoint somebody as well. And if they did, obviously, they'll lose. That is the way it has been explained to me, and the way the code reads. I'm not a lawyer, there's a lot that goes into that decision. The main thing, and the only thing we should be focused on, is praying for our commissioners at this time, during their decision-making, and please don't bombard them, they are dealing with a lot right now, so please respect them during this time, they need time and they need our prayer. Any further comments? Ryan Blake.
Chairman, I just want to express my gratitude to my good friend Vince Deeds for his kind words. Since Vince indicated, we have known one another for a long time, and I know him is a genuinely good man, and it means a lot to me to hear his comments.
We're very blessed to have Senator Deeds, very blessed, that you're another to see another hand. Debbie.
Just a reminder, before you leave, we do have a sign-up sheet for alternate poll workers, I know that you're all going to be standing in line to that, and one more thing, this is not related to the meeting, but I would be remiss if I didn't invite you to our Good Friday service here at my church, tomorrow night at seven o'clock, we have an Easter morning service at ten, and you'll be happy to know that at the end of June, I think, we'll be moving to our new facility in Fort Springs, so the heating system will be wonderful, the roof won't leak, and we praise God for that, so thank you all.
But we will need a new meeting location. I think we're good. Do I hear a, can we go now? Thank you all for coming, this has been a wonderful time. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Danny Moose, is there a second? John Seconds, God bless you all, we'll see you again.